Called me your. They literally.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the revolution which stands in its right hand. In this, there is justice.
Welcome to the October 16th Board meeting today. Good evening. Welcome to the board meeting today of October 16th, 2025. We need to approve the agenda. Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Mr. Russell, I want us to be able to read a letter that I.
We will have to address that later on in the meeting. We're going to take care of our business first.
Okay.
Motion, ayes have it. Our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've decided to have so many of our students here with us today. We were going to get into some recognition for several of them. Also, I'd like to ask the board to please consider personnel contract matters in executive session. If you could ask that, add that to your list and please consider that for me. We have got two groups with us here today. We have got, first of all, our national merit semifinalists. It's at that time of year, we start this process two years. Like, they're sophomores. They go into sophomore, they take the test, they qualify for the PSAT test, and then they test as a junior and then they become national merit semifinalists when they're seniors. We have got the largest amount of national merit semifinalists that we've had in history of our district. We've got, we have got. Yep, and something to be proud of. We have 34 seniors. Today, we're going to be recognizing 12 of the seniors. We'll spread them out over our next couple of board meetings. But we wanted to go ahead and recognize 12 of them today. And we are going to start with Horn Lake High School. I'll ask Principal Nick Tungit to please. Right, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you for all y'all do for our school and students. We have a national merit semifinalist this year, Ms. Caitlin Boyle.
And parents, if your child or grandchild family member is getting a picture, if you want to come up next to Ms. Seale, you can do that. Right, congratulations. Next up, I'll ask Mr. Jacob Striplin, the principal of Olive Ranch High School, come forward.
Morning, board members, Mr. Russell, everyone in attendance. Thank you for being here to recognize these outstanding academic students that are part of the Southern County Schools. Before I call up our national merit semifinalists, I do want to recognize our three teachers that are here today. She retired last year, but Ms. Lisa Webb was an integral part of Ms. Rain's success, as well as Karen Stevens and Ms. Drummond of the Riversdale Girls. Ladies, thank you for what you do for our students. Our national merit semifinalist is Ms. Rain Banks.
Hold on, we have teachers coming. Congratulations. Next up, we have Mr. Adam Sykes, principal of South Haven High School.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Russell, for having us here to recognize these two students. First one, national merit semifinalist is Bobby Redd. There are other national merit semifinalists, Cameron Wood.
Congratulations. Next up, we have Mr. Jason Witt from Center Hill High School.
Hey, Mr. Olson, thank the school board for always allowing us to recognize our stellar mustangs. Before I introduce our national merit finalists, I want to recognize our teachers that are in attendance that work diligently with these students. Ms. Trudy, Ms. Trudy White and Ms. Judy Terry, they're in the bathroom.
Thank you so much.
Our first national merit semifinalist is Isabel Brown. Next up, Caleb Figueroa Kelly. Hannah Pilliard. And Monica Reeves. Ms. White and Miss Terry, can y'all come up for a picture real quick?
Got it, alright. Next up, we have Mr. Shane Jones, principal of DeSoto Central High School.
Mr. Olson, school board, thank you for having us. Thank you for what you do for our students on a daily basis. Before I introduce the four students from DeSoto Central, I'd also like to recognize our teachers that helped push them to this accomplishment. I'll start with this Molly Lininger. My name is Miss Brandon Andrew. First student I'd like to recognize from DeSoto Central is Ms. Alyssa Baller. Mr. Charles Davis. Morgan Richardson. And Ms. Chairess S. Samuels.
Great, congratulations. As I stated earlier, we will recognize our other national merit semifinalists who move throughout the fall. So we've got some more that will be coming in. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Timothy Gardner and Ms. Toni Coleman to come forward. I want to thank the board for allowing us to start the Future Civic Leaders organization this year. This is made up of freshmen and sophomores. Mr. Gardner may tell you a little bit about it. Mr. Gardner teaches at South Haven High School, and Ms. Coleman teaches at Center Hill High School.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Good morning, members of the board. Good to see y'all, and we are excited to be here to present our inaugural Future Civic Leaders group. We have 37 students that were chosen. They went through an application process, and they had to write an essay in which they identified an issue in their community, and they suggested a solution that the local government could do to come up with that. And this is a group, like Mr. Olson said, made up of ninth and 10th graders. It is a one-year program, and our goal is to foster interest for them in local government and civics. And we are hoping to also foster leadership skills in these younger students. So we are very, very excited this year. We've got multiple meetings planned in which we will learn about the different levels of government, state, city, local government. And we do hope to take them to, on a trip to Jackson, where they can actually see the state legislature in session and see it actually happen. So we are very excited to present them, and we are going to call them up individually so that they can be recognized.
Alright, first, I want to welcome Brianna Aquusara. Natalie Andre. As Ba. Autumn Grant. Kylie Bridges. London Briggs. Ian Brown. Max Piper. Henry Kressman. Ella Clark. Lawson Eldred. Bristol Farmer. Hayes Foster. Austria Foster. Corian Hammond. Ellie Garrett. Jackson Green. Jay La Glover. Lauren Henderson. Lexi Henley. Bailey Heigl. Pia Karawala. Hayden Lyons. Presley Marchison. Mary Emma Mead. Vanessa Pacheco. Sarah Parsons. Shiva Patel. Charles Reed. Brennan Rushing. Addison Smith. Adeline Stripling. Gwendolyn Hattfield. Braylon Washington. That's it for the ones that are present.
Great, I want to get a group photo of all of our future civic leaders. So if y'all can come to the front, we'll also put y'all, y'all can also stand on the stage. Like, a couple rows in the front. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great job. Alright, I want to congratulate our first inaugural class of future civic leaders. Also, I want to congratulate our national merit semifinalists. I want y'all hopefully to be a national merit finalist as we move throughout the school year. And I want to thank the parents who are here to support them today. We appreciate all that y'all do for the Southern County Schools. Here just a moment to move into the next phase of our board meeting, and then that way, people who are staying, y'all will be able to, our guests will be able to find a seat. Those of you who are leaving, sorry, students, that would be y'all, because we got to get y'all back in class. Y'all are our leaders, and parents, obviously, who are here with them. If y'all exit out the door, Mr. Chase right there, and then we'll get started with the rest of the board meeting here in just a moment. Thank y'all for being here. And I will conclude my superintendent's report. I want to welcome our guests who are here today that are staying in our board meetings.
Alright.
Thank you. Mr. Pete, you have attorney's report. Yeah, we have some potential litigation matters that we'll review in the next session.
Thank you, Mr.. I need approval or meaning from October 2nd Board meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
No second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Our consent agenda. Mr. Olson, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You visit, Mr. Williams. We'll start off a line item A.
Yes, sir. In your packet is a letter, it's application for purchase of new buses. Vendor's on a state contract and the apartment vote is going to change the business. Buses budget therefore will be paid for out of district fund.
Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to purchase buses.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Line item D, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. In your packet is a letter of financial compensation from the principal of Lake former high school. Who has requested permission to pay a vendor for services rendered before purchase orders issued was issued. Also have to involve in the matter is an address and the necessary steps have been taken to ensure this does not happen again.
Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to pay the vendor at Lake former high school.
Need a motion? Make that motion. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. This, this ad lib number C.
The warning.
The warning.
Okay, this is for August. Revenue collections through August for the general funds are at $44,392,252, which is down about 1% from FY '25 revenues at $44,409,222. The decrease is due to Agewarm. Revenues for all funds are at $51,841,18, which is down 10% over last year at $56,467,037, which is due to the depletion of the ESER 3 funds. We had our last dig for all, and it was well over $6 million. So those funds are gone now. Our general fund expenditures through August are at $41,314,498, which are up 18% over FY '25 expenditures at $35,116,095. The increase in expenditures are still in line with the budget projections.
Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the state revenue expenditures for August 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll say it next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item D, Ms. Franklin.
The combined balance sheet, the fund balance for all general funds are at $236,75,008, which is up 6% over FY '25 at $192,964,295. The fund balance will begin to move closer to pre-COVID figures, with the ESER funds being spent and expenditures being moved back to district maintenance and the completion of the new management.
Recommendation, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for August 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item D, Ms. Franklin.
Okay, the August cash balance for district maintenance is at $199,754,293, which is 82% of the cash balance for all funds, standing at $244,255,425. And the amount invested with Michelle at Regent's Bank at the end of August is $51,871,453.
Have a recommendation, Mr. Russell?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement cash flow for August 2025.
Do we have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next line item, Ms. Franklin, please.
Okay, the certification of bank reconciliations, all bank statements have been reconciled with no exceptions. Students here? Always.
Thank you. Someone. Thank you. Mr. Russell, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the certification of bank reconciliations for August 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it next.
All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Mr. Kirkland, line item G.
Yes, sir. We are asking to rescind this policy due to Mississippi School Board Association update involving several policies regarding board meetings. Information was repeated in multiple policies. This will help streamline the information in the board meetings.
Mr. Olson, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve rescinding the board policy BCAC special means.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkland, line item H.
Yes, sir. We are asking to rescind this policy as well due to the same NSBA update.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve rescinding the board policy BCBA for time and place of board meetings.
Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item I, Mr..
Yes, sir. We are asking to rescind this policy to streamline the information regarding school district employee children and key district transfers in the board meetings.
Do we have a recommendation, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve rescinding the board policy JBCDD.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Line item J, Mr. Kirkland.
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy due to the Mississippi School Board Association update involving the policies with board meetings.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy BC for board meetings.
Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item K, Mr. Kirk.
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy to update language in order to streamline information for school district employees, children, and district transfers into the board meeting.
Recommendation, Mr. Olson?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy JBCCA.
Do we have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item L, Mr. Kirk.
Yes, sir. And we're asking to revise this policy, the board meeting policy with the school district employee children and industry transfers.
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Olson?
The revised board policy, I recommend to approve JBCD.
Do we have a motion?
I make that.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item E, Mr. Kirk.
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy due to another Mississippi School Board Association update to include language from state.
Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy KCB for community involvement decision making.
Do you have a motion?
I make that. I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Mr. Alexander, person next.
Yes, sir. My packet, this morning is page one, recommendations, page two, there's no changes. Page three is a demo for myself on a question I've been awarded the educator license, so they're provisional page. Page four is a demo for Coach Keaton, their director of athletics on a higher professional who worked basketball at Fernando Middle School. Page five is the board of education flow chart. Page six is the superintendent's flow chart. Page seven is the human resources flow chart. Page eight through ten is the data customer support, FMLA and workers' comp job description. These have all had some added to them. Pages eleven through thirteen is the new job description for data customer support. Page fourteen through sixteen is also for data customer support for data processing. Pages seventeen through nineteen is data customer support for data processing. Those are all in official positions. Pages twenty through twenty-two is data support verification for job description. Page twenty-three is accountability and accreditation flow chart. Page twenty-four is the office of workforce development flow chart. Pages twenty-five through twenty-seven is the CTE coordinator, principal change, uh, description, which now they report to the workforce development director where the passage is assistant superintendent of accreditation. Page twenty-eight through twenty-nine is the CTE principal, and it's the same change there. Page thirty is assessment of accountability flow chart. Pages thirty-one through thirty-three is elementary, middle schools, interdisciplinary test coordinator, who they report to now will be chief. And page thirty-four through thirty-six is the high school testing coordinator with the same change to thirty-four too. Page thirty-seven is accreditation MIS flow chart. Page thirty-eight is student records and graphic services flow chart. Pages thirty-nine through forty is request for additional paper received from my director of federal programs who will grant teachers support. At least two tutors for special education students. This will begin ten seventeen and run group five twenty-two. We pay thirty dollars per hour. Page forty-one is request for additional paper and samples for assistant superintendent on employee who will serve critical needs feature for Chickens College Elementary. Serve third grade, year later for two sections. This will be paid a thousand dollars per section and two installments in November, December. Page forty-two is request for examples unemployed who will serve as critical satellite teacher for bagging geometry instruction for babies who we have now to set up central high school. They'll do one section for a thousand.
Mr. Olson, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel's present.
Need a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Risky appeals, Mr. Bob.
Yes, sir. I'd like to discuss in the second session.
Yes, well, Mr. Keith, you have a call.
Yeah, I think I'll make a statement that kind of terrifies a couple of things that have come up in the last couple of days because I have heard from many of you, uh, my email has been flooded and I will tell you, I have read every word of every email that you have sent me. And there are two issues that I think I need to clear up. I could not respond to you individually. Uh, would have been able to gotten any sleep with the number of emails, but the issues revolve around two points. And first of all, let me state to you what my role is as a board attorney. My role is to protect the school district uh, from legal matters, legal issues, things of that nature. And in doing so, I had to advise the board, the duly elected school board and the superintendent and his staff in terms in legal matters. That's my role is to protect the district. Now, in the issues that have been brought to my attention from many of you is, number one, removal of a board member. And I wanted to make sure that you understood that this board has no statutory or legal authority whatsoever to remove a duly elected board member. And I know some of you have asked me to look into that and to, to, to see about the board removing a board member. They don't have that authority. All of them are duly elected and therefore they don't have that authority to do that. Interestingly, some of you have even asked me to get superintendent to exercise authority to remove a board member. He has no authority to remove a board member because he actually works for the board. So he doesn't have any authority there as, as well. Um, and so I just wanted to make sure you understood that. I was not ignoring your emails, believe me, but I just knew that I couldn't respond to each one of you individually. The other issue has to do with personnel terminations and, and the thing that you do have to understand there is that every licensed contractual employee has a contract that gives them federal and state due process rights. And my role as a, as a board attorney is to advise the superintendent as to when the threshold has been met under the law that enables personnel actions to be taken. Um, and if we can't meet that threshold, then I'm, I'm not bashful about saying, no, we can't. If we have met that threshold, then I'm not bashful about saying, yes, we can move forward with those. But that's my role is to make sure that I keep the school district out of legal trouble by making sure that we follow the law. And that's my role. I will make sure that I made that clear to all of you. And I knew I could not convey that and try to respond to each one of your emails. Believe it or not, I appreciate your emails. I rate, read them. Well thought out, well written. But some of those are just misplaced in terms of understanding what is the role of these other board members and their ability and there's a personnel decision that has to be made by the superintendent. Because if I allow the superintendent not to follow the law, then obviously we got other legal issues that we would, uh, be faced with. One other point I will make, and if you would just allow me to make this statement, I, I've been doing this work going into my forty-fourth year. And you probably said, well, when are you going to retire? Well, I'm not going to because I'm, I'm too passionate about public education. You guys have one of the best good officials in the state, and this is it. If you just look at the results and because you have thirty-five thousand students, you have a major impact on the, the direction and the course of public education in this state. You know, there's a lot of issues out there that we're, we're struggling to have to face going forward. But I just, as I go around this state and I visit other school districts, and there are a lot of good school districts in this state, uh, I just want to emphasize to you my observations of the governance that you get out of your school board and your superintendent and the administration. They do not know I'm going to say this. I, I did not rehearse this with them at all. I did not ask them permission to be able to say this. But I, I know what a good thing y'all have to go with. My goodness, look at the scores of all these kids this morning. This is so good.
If I was your owner, I'm going to ask you to leave. We're going to discuss this.
My, my, my point is, is and my point in, in making a statement is that this community working together can make this district even better. That's all I'm saying. And I, I'm not, I'm not making comments what's happened or anything of that nature, but I just want y'all to know what a special school system it's all about. And I'll tell you why it's special for your community and, and the circumstances you have in place, you know, passions and children. I just felt like I needed to say that and hear that up because I wanted to answer your, your email. And I will try my best to answer them. Okay?
While this board policy and procedures, we do allow for public comment, but you have to get on the agenda to be on public comment. We welcome public comment. Well, you have to get Miss Belinda in a, fill out an application, be on the, and it's in our first board meeting of the month. We, we've been doing this since I've been here and they've been doing this forever. So to get on public comment, you have to fill out a form and get on the agenda.
Can I say something? I just want to say this. I mean, the reason I sent something out yesterday is because I, the entire county is hurting right now. And I, I totally understand that.
If you have a hard order, I'm going to clear the room, please. Just one at a time. Let, let Mr. Olson talk.
Mr. Keith, can I just ask a question? You said this is your legal duty to make sure that your board members are following the law. If your board member is violating House Bill eight seventeen and several Mississippi coded laws, is it not your job?
I need a motion for consideration of both sessions of the board should enter executive session with following matters, residency appeals. Need a motion.
What?
If y'all leave your name, it's only the name of the board member. My presence here is not to engage in social media debate, but to execute my professional duty to advocate for vulnerable populations. The core issue before you is not a difference of opinion. It is whether the institution, station, and board member who was in the office of a fee of guilt for systematic child rape improvement may be the authority to defend the predator. This board has an immediate legal and ethical mandate to prioritize the psychological safety of every child in this district. Ms. Henley's actions constitute a breach of this mandate and her public defense is an act of institutional betrayal. Here are the legal grounds for immediate removal based on Mississippi code. We are demanding removal based on documented violations of professional and public trust.